... please.
Arthur, just put it for our six public comments.
The council was briefed in closed session on items A, B, and C.
Yeah, just fill that out.
Sorry, we're reparting out right now?
No pitfalls.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the item, the council was briefed on items A, B, and C. As to item A, the council directed that settlement be explored and that if certain defined terms were acceptable to all parties, that settlement be entered into. If settlement is completed, then the matter will return to the council for a receive and file after it is fully executed. As to item B, there was no reportable action, and as to item C, there was no reportable action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn our special meeting closed session. And now, I would like to bring to order our city council meeting for October the first, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. I'd like to start off by introducing Darrell Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway, who will lead us in our invocation. If everyone will please stand and remain standing. After the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Troop 174. Scouts presenting the flags are Nicholas Castillo, Jacob Park, Derek Lee, Jordan Mendoza, and Stanley Liu. The troop's next activity is the annual survival campout at Bell Mountain near Apple Valley on October 5th, 2016. The scouts will learn about desert survival skills such as building shelters, water still, and animal traps. Troops 174 meets every Thursday from 7:30 to 9:00, I'm assuming this is PM, at Westminster Presbyterian Church near the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Live Oak. Thank you.
Let us pray. O divine Creator, we your children are gathering together this evening to conduct the business of this, the city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might, as a community, become an even better community than we already are. We know that this will not be an easy task, but one that considers all the problems and difficulties that we face in this troubled world. We know that this is not something that we can do on our own, but only with your divine support and guidance. It is for this reason that we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we, Lord, see the world around us and this community as your divine creations, as we are, and we are given its care and its caregivers. We know that this is not the same thing that we can do on our own, but we need your help and guidance. Therefore, let our prayers be up to you this evening. That through you and of you and by you, we might build this better community here in Temple City would be our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
(inaudible)
Okay, we're going to be moving on to item five ceremonial matters. We have our pet
of the month. We have Cindy Rigmi, President of the Board of Directors for the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. This is Jim. Jim is a seven-year-old, well, there's even a story behind that, but this is Jim. A seven-year-old Chihuahua dachshund mix. He came to us as a stray. Nobody knows his backstory. Some of the neighbors thought that they knew the owner, but they never came in, and he's still with us. So, he is a wonderful boy. He will sit most of the time. He travels well in a car, and he is famous for being on KTLA last Saturday morning. They had an extended morning show to promote the Dodger-Giant game, and they called us last Tuesday and said, "If you can get us four dogs to come racing down here, we'll have two Dodgers and two Giants." And he was unfortunately a giant representative, but he lost.
(laughing)
He did his part.
And the Dodgers did great, so that was the point. So, this is Jim, available for adoption, and we do hope to see everyone this Saturday at our...
He sits.
Like I said, he sits when he wants to. Everybody this Saturday at our 95th anniversary celebration down at the shelter. It is an all-day event, so drop in whenever you can. We'd love to see you there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
I just want to see, I can't see.
Cindy, can you put him over here so we could see him? Man, I think Mayor Fish wants to take him home.
(laughing)
She said she wanted to see.
Well, I think this is like the perfect size for me. Hi! Oh, my goodness!
Just leave him here, next to the mayor.
I'll call you, Cindy. Okay, we're going to be moving on to item B, Temple City Unified School District update. I would like to introduce our superintendent, Kim Fricker. Thank you, Kim, for coming.
Hi, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Fish, city council members and representatives, and community members. I just want to give you a little update on Temple City Unified School District. First of all, thank you for having me. It is a pleasure to speak on behalf of the school district before you and city members. Recently, we have just held our State of the School meeting where we've outlined some of the achievements that we've had in the past year, and then what we're looking forward to in this coming year. Recently, the Temple City High School was honored with the California Distinguished Schools Award, so that was a significant honor for our high school. In addition, the Douglas Sears Learning Center earned their six-year WASC accreditation, which is the accreditation agency that ensures that our programs are sound. And our CTE, or Career Technical Education Program, earned an exemplary schools award. So, those were all significant honors that our students and our staff and all of our volunteers have helped us achieve over the past year. In addition, we've outlined some key initiatives that we're coming forward, and we look to begin that work this year. First of all, we just want to take an inventory of our academic program. We want to develop a technology sustainability plan so that our students have access to technology moving into their college and their career endeavors. And then, an in-depth fiscal review, and a look at our board goals, mission, vision, and beliefs across the district. In addition, we've had a significant focus on safety. Beginning in 2018, Temple City Board of Education engaged with Nicole Millar &amp; Associates Investment Firm to conduct a security and vulnerability assessment across all district facilities and all of our school sites. That vulnerability assessment included a physical assessment of all of our facilities and the grounds. It also reviewed operational procedures and the safety practices that we currently employ. And then, it interviewed personnel and stakeholders from around the district to ensure that we were looking at all of the measures that went into student safety. This study was completed, and in the report, it identified some key areas where we would want to address gaps in safety or vulnerabilities within our campuses. These threats or vulnerabilities included areas where we would be prone to theft or vandalism, different access points across the district and across our facilities, any obstructions to visibility that could pose a problem, student and staff overall safety, any threat or workplace violence, or potential to have a workplace violence, and then looking at just general threat assessment or active shooter potential across the campuses, any natural disasters and how we would prepare for them, and then overall preparedness or response action or plans that we have currently put in place. At the end of those reports, we also received recommendations as to how to address some of the areas of need or the gaps in our safety protocols. Those recommendations centralized around controlling access or access points across campuses, looking at our alarms, our surveillance and lighting, and making sure that our facilities are well-lit, especially in the evening hours when students would be on or off campus. In addition, the report did give us status updates. For example, a category of red would be a very high need, whereas a category of green would be very low need. None of our vulnerability assessments resulted in any areas of red that we would have to immediately triage. However, we did spend the 2018-19 school year looking at putting in some of those provisions to make sure that we were mitigating any concerns that were in the report themselves. So, we did have staff look at clear visibility access points and making sure that there were either a single point of entrance or an identified point of entrance to all of our campuses. Fencing and gates were updated. Blinds were installed on the windows of classrooms and doors, just for safety measures, making sure that all of our lock boxes, blocks were put in place for doors so that they could remain locked, and you could shut the door quickly, and the door would remain locked in the event of an intruder on campus. Staff member ID badges were put in place, and an initiative moved forward for staff to be identified when they're on campus. In addition, we put in raptor systems so that visitors who were coming on campus checked in through a visitor's system. It also checked visitors through Megan's Lock to just have an added layer of security for those who are visiting our campuses to make sure that our students are safe. We did take an extra initiative to make sure that some of our maintenance operation workers have playground inspector licenses, and that our playground equipment is being inspected on a scheduled basis. And then, we began to just develop a culture of campus safety and security, and be familiar with our safety plans, make sure our staff is trained, and that we are as prepared as possible should anything negative occur on our campuses. Looking forward to this school year, the 2019-20 school year, we will be working towards developing an updated master facilities plan. Again, we will be looking at our campuses with that safety/security lens, and then we will also be prioritizing updated facilities projects that we have online. We are currently in the process of rekeying all of our schools to make sure that we minimize access points or individuals with keys floating around to make sure that our students are safe while they're on campus. And we're going to continue that playground inspection cycle that I had mentioned previously. We are also planning, thank you, Brian, working in cooperation with the city to hopefully conduct an active shooter drill, and that would be in the spring of this year, and that would help not only our staff, but also the community agencies, responders have an active training should something occur on a very large facility, that we would be prepared, as prepared as possible, in the event that that would happen. We are also in process of developing a health and wellness support program for our students and our staff, and we believe that having a healthy, happy staff and healthy, happy students is the first line of defense. And then, last but not least, we are going to update some of our operational systems, our practices, processes, and protocols that are currently in place so that they match state federal guidelines for school safety. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you very much for coming, and you are always welcome to any of our meetings to give us an update.
Thank you.
You have a question for you?
Sure.
Yes. When you shared that, well, welcome, first of all. When you shared that the school district will be having some increased programs in health and wellness, I'm wondering if you're partnering at all with LA County and the Sheriff Department. The LA County Supervisor has just allocated quite a bit of money to provide that type of service to high schools and elementary schools. So, it might be something you can reach out to them and possibly partner with them also to get some funding.
Thank you very much for that tip. I will definitely take you up on that. And we are looking at all grant funds available in that area. Our current Chief Business Officer is in charge of that, and so we're tracking down a couple things, especially from our Special Education SELPA program, but that's a definite tip we can use too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor Fish, for the next item, Parks and Recreation Department. Actually, Mr. Lawson in the first meeting of November will be coming back, and this will be utilized as a quarterly update to the council on the Committee on Aging. So, nothing to report on that tonight.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go on and move on to item number six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda.
Sure.
Doctor, sorry. You put the name, I couldn't find the name. Sorry. Hi, how are you? Yes. Of course.
Thank you. Arthur Cretin, Temple City Animal Hospital.
Yes.
Today is our ninth anniversary at the hospital, celebration. We've been experiencing a little bit of street crime at the hospital, and, you know, it's hard to look back on a number of years and see if there's spikes and lulls and stuff like that, but I think we're seeing a little bit more right now. I think we've seen four episodes in the last year, and that's probably, I think, one year would be typical before that. Right now, we just had two things in the last week. We had a break-in in our parking lot, and then, just today, there were a couple people riding around in bicycles, not necessarily at our place, but in the immediate area, and they were picking stuff off of people's lawns and acting really suspicious. And with that, I approached Mr. Chavez and the city manager, and raised the issue of maybe putting blocks in alleys, and particularly our alley. And Mr. Cook, as you saw in my subsequent email, you know, there's a lot of literature out there about that topic. It's not unprecedented, and it is used to, you know, discourage wandering in unobservable parts of the city. You know, we have, I think, about 25 employees. Twenty-three of them are women. Not that that necessarily speaks to safety issues, but half the year, we're living in the dark, and, man, I'd just like to have a secure environment in our alley where people aren't cruising and looking for stuff and making a getaway. When the car was broken into, probably four days ago now, the suspects came in from the alley to the north of Ranch Real, crossed the street, pulled into our parking area, and left to the south. Not to say that blocking that alley would have solved that issue, but it may have. So, I'd like to bring that to the council as a safety measure for our particular alley and maybe for a discussion in general.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely look into that. I actually live right by there, and I forget there's an alley there.
Oh, where do you live? Never mind.
By La Rosa School. I live by La Rosa School.
Okay.
But I forget there's an alley there, and I only use the alley when I go to your open houses. So, I could see that that would be an issue.
Yeah, it's not a secure feeling, please.
Okay, thank you.
Does the alley just serve the businesses, or does it also serve the residents?
There is a fourplex that parks through that alley. So, presumably, I'll bet some people like the north side and some people like the south side, and maybe that would be a burden for them. On the other hand, they might feel a level of comfort in knowing that their living place is more secure with a more guarded alley. So, yes.
And I know that, just want to share with the council, that city manager Cook has actually gone out to the location and looked at it, and is aware of the situation, and perhaps we can come up with some possible solutions to the issues that are occurring there. So, okay, we will look at it.
We will definitely look at it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Jing Li from Temple City Library.
Welcome back, Jing. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protemp and City Council. My name is Jing, and I'm came from Temple City Library. I'm here to talk about our upcoming October programs. Thanks for the fourth district supervisor, Janice Hong. She was very generous. She actually gave each library $5,000 to conduct programs for adults. So, starting in October, since we are foresee we're going to close very soon, so we tried to use up the money before we close. So, starting in October, you'll see lots of programs for adults. So, next Tuesday, from 6:00 to 7:30, a former U.S. Ballroom Champion, Adrienne Bryant, will come to the library to teach people how to dance salsa and cha-cha. And then, yes. And then, next Wednesday, October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:00, you can come to the library. We have a workshop to teach you how to learn the essential of gardening with California native plants as well. And then, Saturday, October 19th, from 12:00 to 1:30, the chef, Vivian Phong, will come to teach you how to do health Yulameen food, like how to cook a health Yulameen food. And also, Saturday, October 12th, we have a concert by Dr. Gloria Ahuna. So, there's a lot of programs scheduled because it is for adults program. So, we schedule either on a weekend or later at like after 6:00, so people working, adults can participate in our programs. And for the children, we have lots of program as well, but I want to highlight two program. The first one is our annual bookmark contest. So, that is starting right now, and you have until November 1st to submit your entrant, and then you can go to the library to pick up the entrant form, or you can go to our website to download the entrant form from online. That is open for the children from kindergarten up to 12th grade. So, the library winner will be notified by November 15. So, every year, Temple City will have some winner for the whole big county, so our kids are great, very artistic. And also, the popular In-N-Out Burger reading program is back. So, that's open for the children age 4 to 12. So, starting October 5th until November 16. So, any children from age 4 to 16 can come to the library to sign up for the program. So, basically, for every five books read, those receive an award certificate so that they can get one free hamburger or cheeseburger from the In-N-Out, and they can add up to three burgers. It's very popular what people are asking for. So, yeah, if you have children or grandkids or neighbor's kids, and come to the library to sign up for the program starting this Saturday. And we have more programs to offer, so if you want to know more detail, please go to our website, www.lacountylibrary.org, or you can give us a call at 626-285-2136. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had a real quick question while you're up here. You know, we had representatives from the county library here, was it last meeting, or week before?
Yeah.
To talk about the new library that we're going to get. And I believe they had stated that our library will probably be shut down for, what, a couple years, or a year and a half, maybe?
They were, I think the original price is eighteen months.
Have they shared any of that with you, or the plan, like what's going to happen? Maybe you could...
No.
Because they weren't really very clear on that either.
All I heard is just they were working right now, so they anticipate probably we're going to close either by the end of December or the beginning of January. So, our staff worked very hard, so now we're studying like waiting the collection and declutter the library, because the more we wait, the less box we can, we need to box stop.
No discussion about where you're going to maybe take up residence while they're working on it?
No. I think you probably know better than me.
Well, I'd hope they let you know.
No, no, no. They will let you know first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Stafford.
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protemp, or Chavez, council members and city staff. I attended a council meeting last Wednesday at South Pasadena, and I, one of the council members, Diane Mohammed, had told me about this, that Councilman Portatino and several other council members are getting together with a bill to reopen the recycling places that closed down back in July. And they're trying to get this done as soon as possible. What it's going to entail is a fund for California's recycling to back up if the place files bankrupts. It won't close them all. They'll have a fund there to back it up. And I think we should support this because I think, you know, I see a difference, and a lot of people that see the homeless, see the difference in their temperament right now because they can't redeem their recyclables. That's how they live. And this is, I'm glad to hear this because it's been down, like I said, since July, and people still leave stuff there. And I hope you'll support this, and I hope we get it done real quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, moving on to, I don't need a motion, right?
Yes, we do need a roll call.
Can I get a roll call, please? I always forget.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Public hearing, unfinished business. Update by the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments regarding the memorandum of agreement for participation in the Coyote Management Implementation Plan.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, before you tonight, Alexander Feng from the San Gabriel Valley Coalition of Governments, management analyst, will be presenting to you some of the elements of the Coyote Management Program that we presented to you several meetings ago. That program would be a two-year program. Each city would participate for two years, committing $10,000 per fiscal year. You would ask for some additional information about that program, and Mr. Feng is here to make that presentation to you this evening. Alexander.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Good name, that's my son's name.
(laughing) All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protemp, council members. Thank you so much for inviting the COG out to speak on our Coyote Management efforts. We prepared for a brief presentation for you today. There's going to be a lot of information, so please do not hesitate, please do not hesitate. There's going to be a lot of information, so please do not hesitate to ask any questions during the presentation if you have any. We know that there's going to be a lot of information. So, but yeah, thank you so much for inviting us. And all right, with that said, so just some background information on the COG. We are a subregional government agency that serves to maximize resources and advocate for regional interest to improve the quality of life for the 2 million residents in the San Gabriel Valley. I know that Councilmember Sternquist serves as our president on the COG and she can probably do a much better job of explaining this than I do. But our governing board includes representatives from the 30 cities, including Temple City, three Los Angeles County Supervisory Districts and three WARD districts that reside in the San Gabriel Valley. The governing board addresses regional issues of importance, including but not limited to transportation, homelessness, environment and water. Some of the projects that the COG does includes capital projects and goods movement, energy efficiency, homelessness, mobility programs and micromobility, regional housing trust fund, water resiliency, public outreach efforts and most recently coyote management. So, the existing problems, our member agencies, including the city of Temple City, have been experiencing an increase in the numbers of human coyote encounters in the past decade. So, several of our member agencies adopted their own coyote management plans to reduce human coyote conflicts within their communities, but many of our member agencies don't have one in place. So, the task force was formed to address the existing and rising coyote issues in the San Gabriel Valley. We met three times over the course of the past nine months to assess the feasibility of developing a regional coyote management framework. Also collaborated with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Office of Assembly Member at CHOW, the UC Agriculture and Natural Resources, Humane Society Organizations, as well as the County Agricultural Commission slash Ways and Measures. So, with all these external stakeholders, we developed two documents, or the task force developed two documents to present to the city managers, steering committee and as well as our governing board. And these are the regional coyote management framework and the coyote management implementation plan. Both of these documents are separate from one another even though they both strive and aim to tackle coyote issues in the region. Just one quick slide on the regional coyote management framework. Now, this is a template. This serves as a document for cities to adopt and modify based on their own needs. Includes coyote management strategies, reporting tools and other resources that cities can utilize to reduce human coyote conflicts. The document also provides recommendations for cities to educate their residents and communities on the differences between appropriate and inappropriate coyote behavior and also assist member agencies with existing CMPs in place to expand their coyote management services and strategies. This template is available for all of our member agencies without cost and cities can take the template, modify however they like and adopt it if the council would like. And what we're really here for, we believe, is the coyote management implementation plan. Really, this should be renamed as the Coyote Management Public Outreach Implementation Plan. And this plan was created to provide the COG with a plan of assisting cities to coordinate coyote safety outreach services. Participation within this plan is voluntary for our member agencies and under this plan, the COG will serve as the umbrella organization for providing public outreach efforts, promoting effective human coyote conflict strategies or coyote, human coyote conflict mitigation strategies and supporting a robust coyote reporting and response mechanism on behalf of the participating agencies. This plan is meant to complement cities' existing coyote safety public outreach efforts.
Okay, so you say it's meant to complement existing. What if you have no existing? Is it...
Then we will provide...
Take their place?
Yes, yeah, to replace in a sense. Good question. So, the programs and services offered within the coyote management implementation plan are broken into three categories. The first one being public outreach and education. That will include the COG hosting regional community meetings and training workshops, distribution of mailers, as well as social media posts and also running a youth outreach programs to ensure that our students are protected on campuses. The second category being the non-urgent coyote response services. This would include the COG running its own website or webpage to display coyote safety information and also having an online coyote incident reporting system that residents can report coyote encounters online. A hotline would also be made available in multiple languages for residents to report coyotes. Then, last category is regional representation. In this capacity, the COG would merely serve as the regional voice on behalf of the city to all relevant external stakeholders such as the county, the states, humane societies and other organizations that are relevant to coyote management.
May I ask you, the coyote reporting hotline, what exactly does that entail?
So, I will cover it in a future slide. But yeah, if you have any more questions after viewing that slide, yeah. So, I will go into each one of these pretty briefly because I know there's a lot to cover here. So, the community meetings and training workshops is designed to increase the residents' knowledge, awareness and understanding of methods to eliminate coyote attractants. And this is, coyote attractants can be as simple as leaving a pet food or a pet bowl out or it can be, coyotes can be prevented by just keeping a lid on your trash cans. Simple strategies like this, but also more in-depth details of how residents can effectively eliminate coyote attractants in their backyards and in their communities. These workshops provide valuable opportunity for residents to learn about what the COG as well as the cities are doing when it comes to coyote management. And it also includes basic training on species-specific ecology and behaviors by experts from whether it's the UCs or, you know, the Department of Fish and Wildlife or the Humane Society's external partners. The topics covered are include, but not limited to, appropriate responses when encountering coyotes so residents know what to do, human health, public and pet safety tips and concerns such as don't walk your dog without putting a leash on and the leash should be shorter than six foot or maybe you can put coyote rollers on top of your fence and your fence should be higher, should be taller than nine foot, things like this.
Coyote roller?
So, coyote rollers is pretty interesting. It's kind of like a paper towel rolly thing that you can put on top of your fence so when the coyotes or even dogs put their paws on it, they will get rolled off from the fence. Yeah, so it's interesting. Learned this from the Humane Society.
Haven't seen too many of those around.
Yeah, they're actually pretty cheap, interestingly.
Some kind of wires, right? You have some kind of wire.
You can also add bob wires. The problem with fence...
Not bob wires, the rollers, they run on a wire, right?
There are different types. The COG is not too familiar with the models, unfortunately, but the Humane Societies. And if, when we host these workshops, it will be like experts who are very knowledgeable about these topics will be presenting. But I'm sure there are models like that out there as well.
And so, what you're saying then is that part of what we're going to be paying for is having, being able to have these training workshops in the city?
Yes.
And how many training workshops will you do, let's say during a one-year period? Just one or two or...
So, the COG is expected to have two community meetings within each participating city. But given that this is a regional plan, there will be meetings going all around the participating cities.
They could attend anyone they want to, I suppose.
Yeah.
But we have at least two workshops in our city.
Yes.
And who pays for that?
The, these workshops?
Yeah.
It will be the participating cities. So, part of your 10K if the city...
So, is it included into 10,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And so, but we have to provide, obviously, the facility.
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
Given that it's probably best to even have...
And maybe it's too early to tell, but how long you anticipate these training workshops to run?
Probably ninety minutes.
Okay. Because I was thinking, you know, it would be nice if we could partner them up with our neighborhood watch or something. Because we have a captive audience already and it kind of ties in with the safety factors, but a ninety-minute, a ninety-minute session would be a little long to add on to our neighborhood watch, I think.
And if it could be maybe at the ones that, the larger ones like the ones that are...
Yeah, or Library Park or something like that.
That's a long time. Ninety minutes to talk about coyotes, wow.
Yeah, but ninety minutes is a long time.
Yeah, it can definitely be shortened or lengthened depending on what the council would like. It's definitely flexible on that end.
Can you do a fifteen-minute program?
Fifteen? I was going to say, can we have like five meetings that are fifteen minutes instead of... Anyway, we'll talk.
Okay. And oh yeah, moving on to other topics, yard audits. These yard audits would basically provide information for residents to kind of look around their backyard and their, around their residential homes really to kind of figure out if there are any coyote attractants that they can potentially eliminate. As well as effective coyote hazing methods, seasonal behavior changes in coyotes and normal and versus abnormal coyote behavior. So, these are just a selection of topics that we've picked, but there's also other topics that can be included in these workshops. Moving on to the youth education outreach program. This program will be developed to provide age-appropriate coyote education and safety information to local unified school districts located within the city limits. It also includes an annual meeting with local unified school district officials to discuss coyote safety topics in campuses. And this is a very huge priority for the COG to ensure that our children are protected.
But you do know that we're separate entities, right? There's the city and then there's the school district.
And that's fine, yeah.
So, you know, we don't control what the school district does necessarily.
Yes, so...
So, you guys would reach out to Temple City Unified School District?
Yes, and they will...
To do these programs?
Yes, and they will invite their relevant school officials to attend the meeting.
And that's also included in the $10,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Mailers and social media outreach. The COG would mail educational flyers to residents and communities that experience high numbers of human coyote incidents. And these mailers will be provided in different languages to accommodate for the diversity in the San Gabriel Valley. The COG would also disseminate coyote information through the COG's existing social media platforms and also work with the participating cities to publicize safety information on their respective social media channels. So, the COG would also be happy to send electronic copies of our flyers, brochures and mailers to the city so that the city staff can also help with the effort as well.
So, a quick question.
Yes.
You say you'll mail these to communities with high human coyote incidents.
Mm-hmm.
So, what classifies as a community with a high incident? Or I guess specifically, does Temple City fall within what the COG classifies as a high human coyote incident city?
So, what the COG currently classifies these areas, basically, it would be communities that experience three coyote reports within two months in the same census block or communities that experience like a coyote attack on pets.
So, do you know if Temple City falls into that category?
I'm sure there are some communities that do, yeah.
I know we do.
Absolutely, we do.
Okay. I just wanted to verify.
Well, you can go on Ring and see ten of them in one night.
Yeah. Yeah, currently there's a...
No, I don't know if they're in Temple City or not, but they're somewhere in the area.
Now, does a mail, mailer, is that part of the $10,000?
Yes.
How many mailers do you intend to mail?
That is a very difficult number to estimate because this really depends on the amount of reports that our system gets and, but the COG will honor, what is it? What we've mentioned here is like if a census block experiences a report of a coyote attack on pets, then all the residents in that community will receive those mailers. And if a community in the census block also receives three just coyote reports within that same census block within two months, then we'll also mail mailers to that community as well.
Would you also be able to make those flyers available for us to just hand out?
Yes, of course.
To the community, like at different events that we have in the city or have them available in the counter at City Hall?
Yeah, we will also provide physical and electronic copies of, yes.
Excellent. I have a question. On one of the previous slides, it said that you're going to be collecting data from, I'm assuming, reports of coyote sightings and different things. So, you're going to save all of that information. Are you planning or do you have a plan on what you're going to maybe in the future use those specific details for? I was just wondering.
Oh, of course. The plan, well, all the data collected will be shared with the city's point of contact, the state and the county. So, the overall goal is to evaluate these data every quarter or at least every half a year, not just to look at the mailers, but also to kind of figure out, maybe we need a coyote safety street signs around here.
So, you'll be able to tell if there's an increase or just decrease in certain areas of the city?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Thank you.
So, how do you collect those data? You call people or wait for them to call you?
So, that brings us to the next slide, actually. Good. Our website and online coyote incident reporting system. So, part of outreach that we'll be doing with the participating cities' help is, well, for the COG, the COG's end, we would develop and maintain our own webpage that includes coyote safety information and also a link to our online coyote incident reporting system for residents to report coyote encounters. So, this map is accessible on the website or will be accessible, really. And the system will share, yeah, will share reported incidents with participating cities. Moving on to also the hotline, to answer the second part of your question. A regional coyote reporting hotline would be established for the residents of participating cities to report coyote incidents. All the reports from the hotline will be logged and shared with the participating cities and relevant stakeholders. And actually, all the reports submitted through the hotline will be inputted into the online coyote, yeah, map, mapping system so that...
I have a question.
Yes.
When you say incident, is that just a sighting or is that an actual incident where it's attacked an animal or something?
Both.
Both.
So, an incident can be like, oh, a resident just reporting, it's like, oh, I saw a coyote at the Temple City park. Or it would be, it's like, oh no, like a coyote tried to attack my pet.
Okay.
Yeah, so there will be different, yeah, the residents will have that option, different options too, yeah.
And other than the imminent danger situation, which I can't recall an imminent danger situation in Temple City, at least none that's come to our attention, all you're really going to do with this is just keep track of it.
Yes.
There's nothing really going to be done in response.
Well, actually, it's at the next slide.
I mean, I don't know that you can do anything in response. You're not going to send somebody out to the location to get rid of them or to, you know, in any way, you're just going to collect the data.
We will collect the data, but then, the next slide followed responses. Residents that utilize either the hotline or the online reporting tool will receive a follow-up message through email with electronic copies of relevant coyote safety information within three business days. Depending on the severity of their reports, they can, these responses would include merely like coyote safety information to receiving whistles or maybe even like recommending them to form a wild, like a wildlife watch group or directing them to learn more at the upcoming workshop, coyote safety workshop. So, these are the follow-up responses.
And is this an incident reporting database that you'll be collecting? This is, I presume, is separate from what the California Department of Fish and Wildlife already has?
Yes, it will be separate. The Fish and Wildlife tool, they actually only use it merely for their own data collection purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm guessing they won't share that information?
They could share it, but then the responses would be lengthy, like it would take a while for them to share like responses.
Shouldn't you guys be working like together with them?
We are currently working together with them. So, they're one of our collaborators to form this plan, actually. The cities thought about the possibility of maybe even just paying the 10K to the state, but the problem is the state does not have the capacity to take on anything of this sorts. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, like a very, very, very small percentage of their staff time is dedicated to coyote management. They focus a lot on like different types of like animals, like bears, raccoons, like a bunch of other stuff. And coyote just happens to be a big regional issue in the San Gabriel Valley. So, hence why the task force felt more comfortable with the COG taking on this type of public outreach efforts instead of the state. Moving on, regional representation. So, the COG will serve as a regional voice for, on behalf of the participating cities to these external stakeholders, includes but not limited to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the County Agricultural Commissioners slash Ways and Measures, local Humane Societies, UCs or any other research institutions, elected officials and any other relevant stakeholders that are in this realm of coyote management.
What do you mean by serving as a regional voice? You mean to push forward changes in the law, provide policy recommendations? It sounds like, just based on what you said, half of these departments could care less. That's why you guys are taking on that role.
Yeah, so part of it is to, is to basically assert like the importance of coyote management for, in San Gabriel Valley to these external entities. But the other half of it is to just keep them informed about what's really going on. What the task force discussed is that a lot of the city staff or really smaller cities in the San Gabriel Valley don't have the staff time to be able to dedicate to keep in touch or even keep these external partners informed of important coyote information. or even keep these external partners informed of important coyote information or coyote news.
So will the COG take a proactive approach, then, in dealing with these different entities and trying to, I don't know, change how coyote management is conducted? Maybe get California Department of Fish and Wildlife to quit worrying so much about the bears in Temple City, but rather than the coyotes?
Well, we would do what we can, and that's really, for policy recommendations, is at the discretion of our governing board, really. But then what we would do is to just keep them informed with everything that we're doing to show that San Gabriel Valley really does treat this as a regional problem, and that hopefully they can give us more attention.
And if I could, Alex and Councilmember Mayor Protem Chavez, is the whole goal of being a regional body, which the COG is, is to actually come together and speak in a louder voice? If Temple City were to, as one city, try and address this issue with all these people, we might get some response from maybe a couple of them. But you put thirty cities on, you know, on a letterhead that's all signed by the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, it is, does get a lot more attention. And I think that's actually the goal of the COG, is to actually speak as a unified voice for the San Gabriel Valley. So since the three years that, or four years now that I've been with the COG, I mean, there definitely is movement when we do something together than individually two or three cities. I mean, we've seen that happen. I mean, even when we've gone up to Sacramento and, you know, you have a representation of thirty cities who, in a unified voice, say, you need to do something because we need funding or we need some help.
When you say thirty cities, those are the thirty cities that are part of COG?
Yes.
But there aren't thirty cities that are part of this program?
Well, we're hoping that there will be thirty cities.
How many are, how many are there currently?
Fourteen cities submitted letters of interest. Let's see, the cities of Alhambra, Susa, Erwendo, and San Marino recently approved it. Arcadia, Covina, Elmani, Montebello, Roseme, San Dimas, San Gabriel, and Temple City is currently reviewing.
So you have basically four cities that are currently participating, correct?
Yes, but then we, like, this is a period for the city councils.
I know, you're just getting started, so...
Right, yeah.
There's a lot of coyotes.
But I'm curious, what can, yeah, collecting data is all fine and good. I mean, it's, you know, hard to make decisions with some kind of data, right? But I'm afraid that the data is only proving the obvious, that we're, we have so many coyotes around us. What can these state and county bodies, what can they really do? I mean, always, what we've been hearing all night, what I've been hearing all night, is we're educating our people. It's really not so much a coyote management plan, like you were first started. It's really a management plan. It is a communication, a public outreach plan to residents, is managing people, not coyotes, managing our behavior towards coyotes. I'm not really sure what, even if we get a lot of solid data proving the obvious, what can we really do? I mean, you have a voice, but what does a voice lead to, is my question.
Well, with hard data, then we can really push for policy change at the, like, at the higher levels, whether it's the county or the states. A lot of our cities, the reason why this whole task force was formed, and as you may probably know, the COG is not an animal control agency.
Right.
It's become such a severe problem that even not an animal control agency has to focus on it. So this is a first step in the journey to really get more resources from the state to pay more attention to us. And that is exactly why this program is only, it's only proposed for two years. We hope that, like, in the not-too-far-out future, then this won't be a problem anymore because we'll have more resources, our residents will be more educated, and the state and the county will pay more attention to the coyote issues in the San Gabriel Valley.
But what, I think, to follow up on Councilmember Yusef's point, but what is the vision of COG, or what do they hope to accomplish with this data? Are they, is there any, maybe it's too early to tell, but I agree with Vince. I mean, we're just stating here the obvious. I, we know that there's a coyote issue, not only in Temple City, but San Gabriel Valley. I don't think we need some people to be calling in and collecting data. You can go on Ring and see those things all day and night, coyote sightings in the area. So my concern is, to what end is all of this? Let's say after two years, you develop all this data, then what happens? I'm assuming that COG has a plan to carry this to Sacramento. But then what do they do? I know there's been test cases in the courts already. You can't trap them, you can't kill them, you can't get rid of them. You know, they're wild animals and they almost have as much right to the area as we do. But at least that's what the courts have said so far, so...
Well, multiple responses to that question, to that comment. But the first thing that popped in my mind was when you mentioned trapping. Trapping is allowed for, like, for the cities. Actually, trapping is allowed for cities.
For cities.
And also for private residents, if they would like. But what they would have to do is to contract through certified trappers through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
So COG will not be involved in trapping?
It was a discussion that was brought by the task force, but given the direction that the task force wanted to take, trapping would not be offered as a service within this plan. But then the COG, like, we wouldn't stop the city from trapping coyotes, if you would like. Because there are cities that would like to take more aggressive...
And once you trap a coyote, then what do you do with it?
So under current state law, if you trap a coyote, they would have to be euthanized. Unless the coyote is injured, then the injured coyote will be taken to a sanctuary where it's rehabilitated, and then they will be released back in the exact same location where it was caught.
Well, if that's true, then why are not these cities getting together to trap the coyotes and then solve the problem?
I think, like our city, we weren't even aware that you can trap.
I wasn't aware of that either, but it sounded like you can.
But if you were part of the coyote management plan and you were educated, you would know that.
But it still wouldn't do anything because they're not going to trap them.
It's actually, it's a plan, it's a management plan, it's not an extinction plan.
No, I understand that.
Because the more coyotes, it's proven proven, the more coyotes you eliminate, the more they replicate.
Yes, it's true, yeah.
Wait.
Yes, the more you...
The more you eliminate, the more you have?
Yes, the more they produce. I cannot explain the scientific, because I didn't read that far, but it's a very interesting fact that the more coyotes you eliminate, the more that will reproduce to make up and, in massive numbers. Basically, when I read it, it was similar to, like, cockroaches. You're never going to get rid of them. And they mate en masse. And they mate so that they're not going to be extinct. It's a very interesting phenomena, but it is proven science, if you take the time to look at it. I was very interested, but, I mean, I didn't go into depth on that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm assuming you are on this task force's...
I staff the task force, yes.
Okay. Do other states have other things that they do for their supposed coyotes or wild animal issues?
We haven't really looked into other states, but what other cities, such as cities in NorCal, have done? They pass, they pass measures to kind of more strictly enforce the, like, prohibiting the feeding of wildlife.
Prohibit the feeding of wildlife, okay.
Yeah, so that actually helps.
But that would be more in, like, rural areas, I'm assuming? Because we don't have a whole lot of wildlife that we're feeding. I mean, that I can think of.
Yeah, in the unincorporated areas of LA County, it's actually a misdemeanor if you're caught feeding wildlife. So we have different jurisdictions doing their, like, their own policies.
So what you're saying is there's really no other rules that these cities are implementing as far as coyotes or wild animals?
Some cities decide to just take a more aggressive approach and trap and euthanize them, but they do see reports of coyotes coming back. Some cities kind of do this type of public outreach efforts to kind of enhance the residents' awareness and help the residents to learn how to coexist with wildlife, given that these urban coyotes, as what other cities have seen, it's like they would just keep coming back. So this plan, and the task force as well, agree that this plan should be developed, should be developed and was developed in a way to help residents to be more educated so they can safely coexist with wildlife, but without compromising public safety, so...
So you're not going to advocate our residents to trap these coyotes, are you? Is that part of the plan?
Well, it was not included in the plan, but we would provide that information if a resident or a city is interested in going that approach. So we would provide that information on teaching them to go through the process of, like, trapping coyote if they would like to learn more about it.
The cities, but not the individuals. The cities, but not the individual residents.
That would be individuals as well, if they are coming to the community meetings, and yeah.
I mean, it's a different beast, but I think an analogy would be, like, the homeless plans that Arcadia did. Temple City did not do a homeless plan. So we have issues with homelessness, and we don't have a plan. This would take what, like the city of Arcadia did and other cities, who spent the $30,000-plus to implement a homeless plan in their city. They devised the plan. They had their own members of the task force within their own city, and they made up a plan that worked for their city. This takes that weight off of the city individually with a coyote management plan. So the homeless plan in Arcadia was not to basically eliminate homelessness in the city of Arcadia, because that's a revolving door. But how to deal with it and educate people in the best avenue that they can, it can be done. So I think if you were going to look at, like, the homeless plan, if we decide that we're going to partake in a homeless plan, we're going to have to use staff resources and task force to do that. This was a way to take a broader plan or a broader problem in the San Gabriel Valley with coyotes to take that responsibility off the city so that they could focus on things like homelessness. Because right now, I mean, the only resource I think we have is to call the city and say, I just want, or get on Nextdoor and report that there is a coyote sighting. By the time...
But isn't that, rather than call us, they're just going to be calling them?
Right, but I think they're doing, the city is not doing education on coyote management at all. Correct?
They do have someone on the website.
I think what's happening is there's a difference between looking this at, as eliminating coyotes in Temple City. It's not going to happen with this plan or any other plan. The same with homelessness. It's going to educate, it's going to guide, it's going to give people a foundation so that they feel they have something that they can do. Right now, I feel like there's nothing that my neighbors can do that don't have a clue about coyotes at all. And they leave their trash lids open day in and day out. And I'll remind them, please put your lid on your trash cans, don't feed the coyotes. So, I mean, it is a foundation, it is not a cure-all. We're not going to cure, you know, get rid of coyotes in the San Gabriel Valley. We are going to manage them better, I think, through this plan. And that's the same thing with a homeless plan. When our city decides to partake in that, it will hopefully manage homelessness in a much more constructive way than what we have right now. I think that's pretty much what it's doing, it's going to do. But if, we cannot think that $10,000 is going to eliminate coyotes in Temple City.
And I understand that, and I'm not saying...
I think it's been over-analyzed, to be honest.
Well, first of all, I don't think I would compare homeless and coyotes. I'm not sure that I would do that.
I'm not comparing the two, the homeless person and the coyote. What I'm comparing is a management plan.
For homeless and coyotes.
One has to do with homelessness and one has to do with coyotes.
I don't see the analogy, but anyway...
Well, we can argue about that all day.
Yeah. I have no problem with what they're doing. I understand that they are providing these workshops, these school workshops, these mailers, all the things that we don't have to do. My only question is, is that worth the $10,000? Because as stewards of public funds, we always have to look, if we're going to pay X amount of dollars, is that worthwhile doing it?
And that's a policy decision.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I have no problem with what they're doing, that's, but that's my, that's the issue I have to go around.
So I don't think you're going to get a definitive answer if this is the best use to solve coyote problems in Temple City with the $10,000. So I think we can debate that from now until the sun comes up. The decision is a policy decision. I mean, because I can point out numerous other things that we've done with $10,000 that I don't think benefit the whole community of Temple City. And I don't, you know, that's a policy decision, and we don't always agree on those policy decisions, and that's why there's five of us.
From the COG standpoint, is there any discussion as to whether the COG would advocate for change at the legislative level? That will allow, that will allow cities to have more local proactive control in response to coyote incidents?
Yes, and I think that's been proven. And I think if we look at the MS4 permit with water, we would not be where we are today with the resources that are being given. We would be trying to put out so much money to meet the MS4 permit requirements. It's only because of the COG and the Water Committee that came together, time in, and spent numerous endless hours advocating in Sacramento. At our last COG meeting, Susan Rubio came. Susan Rubio came to, you know, present a large check for homelessness for the San Gabriel Valley COG of almost $6 million. That's not going to happen by one city, you know, going to say, we need help. That is the ultimate goal, is to reach out to our legislators and to advocate. I mean, we don't just go to Sacramento, we go to Washington. So we both go to the federal and the state level.
Well, I guess, let me rephrase that. Because I know different cities have different policy perspectives on how to manage coyotes. Some might take the view that you must coexist, and therefore, this whole idea of entrapping, killing, euthanizing is, like, off the table. So I guess what I'm trying, what I hear from residents is they don't see the local agency have any authority to react to it in a way that the residents feel is an appropriate response. So this whole idea of educating, they're like, well, you can educate me all I want, but if a coyote shows up in my yard, all that education's not going to do much if they attack my small dog or something, right?
And remember that there was a task force that was made up from, I don't know who exactly, but Temple City was a representative. Who was our representative, Alex, on that task force?
Brian and Ashley, I believe.
So we had our city manager and Ashley be our task force representatives who brought what they thought was pertinent to our city to that task force. And that task force made the recommendations to use this as the tool for coyote management.
So you're saying that two of our staff attended these meetings?
Yes.
To form the recommendations that we're hearing tonight?
Yes.
We never heard of that until tonight.
Brian has...
I wasn't aware of that.
Brian has shared it at our council meetings, that he had participated. Brian, I don't know when the meetings occurred, but you have shared that with us before, that he has, he shared it with, at our last meeting also. But, so cities had representatives from various cities. So it wasn't the COG's staff's input. It was representatives from various cities in the San Gabriel Valley, members of the COG, the thirty cities, to formulate what they thought the best management plan was. So it wasn't staff from the COG, it was the cities.
All right, I have a few more slides for these presentations.
Sorry.
But just to wrap it up, our participating cities, I know Mayor Protem Chavez was asking about this. So fourteen cities expressed interest throughout the summer. All of them are going through, reviewing the MOA. Um, all of them are going through reviewing the MOA or taking them to city councils to review or for discussion. Um, as of today, four cities have officially approved it, El Hambras, Azusa, Erwindo and San Marino. Two decide to not participate, given that they do not have the staff capacity to even provide a point of contact. And two of the, and these two cities were Glendale and Wanam.
Glendale and who was the other?
Glend, oh, oh, not Glendale.
I was gonna say, Glendale's not in our COG.
Glendale and Wanam, my bad. Um, and, um, Arcadia, Covina, El Monte, Montbello, Rosemeat, San Dimas, San Gabriel, San Gabriel and Temple City is still reviewing it. And I just heard that San Gabriel passed it tonight, the city of San Gabriel. So, yeah, we have four confirmed, five confirmed with San Gabriel, two not participating. So, that leaves, was it six or seven?
So, these are the fourteen cities that have expressed interest?
Yes.
So, there's sixteen cities that have not expressed any interest?
Yes.
And which cities are those?
Oh, oh boy, yeah, it's, huh, usually the larger cities with more resources to run the program on their own or they.
Oh, okay, they have their own program, basically.
And I would think the cities that are closer to, like Walnut, um, San Dimas, the foothill cities are the ones that are closer to where the problem seems to start and then come, you know, south. But, um, I, I think the ones closest to the foothills are the ones where you'll see are the most interest takes place.
And so, most of these cities are interestingly located around the western San Gabriel Valley. So, yeah, these are the cities. The cities that agreed to participate and officially signed the MOA, agreed to proceed with contributing ten thousand dollars a year per city for two consecutive years to receive these services that are managed by the COG. Why two consecutive years? Our task force and city managers during committee decided that it would be best that way to ensure that there's proper staffing to avoid turnovers at the COG. And also just sustainable funding to run the program successfully for two years. City, um, yeah, cities are currently in the process of reviewing and signing MOAs with the COG, whether if they decide to participate or not. Um, and services listed within this program are scheduled to commence on November first of this year. That is the day that the COG can start paying our staff to begin working on developing all these resources.
That's what I wanted to know.
So.
When do you think you'll be up to speed, though, having all, all the things you've talked about, the flyers, the, all the things? When will those actually be available to the cities and when will the workshops begin?
At the latest December.
December?
Yeah. So, that would, we're, the COG is hiring.
Pretty quick.
Yes, the COG is hiring one full-time staff just to dedicate to this program. So, it's not, if you spend forty hours a week on this, yeah, like, you should be able to develop all this within a month.
But if you get all fourteen cities, that means you have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but if you only get four cities, that means you only have eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, yeah, and we only.
How are you going, I mean, that has to, to, to have to relate to how you're gonna run this program, depending on how many, how many funds you have.
Right, so at the rate that we're going, we're, we're anticipating that around eight to nine cities will jump on board. Um, and our executive director decided we'll still go ahead with running the program.
That'll still cover the expenses that you think you need.
Yes, yeah. So, that will cover the marketing materials, cover mileage reimbursements, the salary and benefits.
Would, would it be fair to call this sort of like a pilot program then? It's a, a two-year program and then at the end of the two years, I guess the COG will determine, well, okay, where are we? And has this been beneficial and, you know, are we gonna go a step further? I mean, I, I, I take it that'll all be in the back of your mind at some point.
Right, so the governing board will be reviewing it after one year and then like make a, and then make a decision to see if like this program should continue beyond year two. And the goal is to see improvements as well as just a decrease in the amount of severe human casualty incidents because of the public outreach efforts that's been going around the San Gabriel Valley. And then the COG will see, and the governing boards, under Councilmember Sternquist's direction, will see where we would like to go in the future.
So, so the goal would then be to, I presume, to see a lowering of the incidences involving coyotes and humans? So, that, would that, would that be the win situation for this program then? Is that, what, what is the, what, what would you consider to be a win situation for this particular, you know, project?
Well, one of it is to see a lower, a decrease in the numbers of severe human casualty incidents. That's like a coyote attacks on pets. A lot of residents like to leave cats out at night. And that is not too good of an idea because if there's coyotes roaming around, coyote sees cats or even small dogs as just typical dinner food. So, it's actually appropriate for them to go after the pet in that sense. So, but if the residents are more educated and they, and they understand appropriate coyote behaviors, then these incidents wouldn't happen as much. Then with the data that we get, then there's policies that, that can be pushed out. Whether if it's like, oh, it's something as small as recommending the city council to put up a coyote safety street sign along like.
To put up a what?
It can be something as simple as recommending a, the city council to put up a coyote safety street sign next to a river. Or something like maybe have, maybe have like, whether it's the COG or the city to write a letter of, a common letter or a letter of support for some form of policy to, or a bill to be advocated in the legislature, something like that. There's a lot of different approaches that I guess the data can give us really. So, um, oh, sorry, do you have a comment?
No, 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 no.
So, to wrap up the presentations, the purpose of this whole program. This program was actually not started at the recommendation of COG staff. It, it started at the recommendation of city staff on the task force. These cities on the task force spearheaded this regional effort out of a desire to find a way to provide residents with more robust coyote safety services than what their cities can currently offer, given limited staff and resources. Creating a regional coyote management and safety program can ensure that there's dedicated staff and resources at the regional level working on these issues caused by coyotes and that this program will be a comprehensive and integrative regional approach to coyote management. The COG will work as a coordinating force with the dedicated staff members responsible for preparing materials, community meetings, interfacing with other organizations that are involved in coyote management, monitoring these reports and responding to residents who have coyote encounters and provide them with assistance in reducing human casualty conflicts.
Alex, you know what you just said prior to reading this? That should actually be the start of the presentation, 'cause I think that answers quite a few questions.
Oh, we'll, we'll make note of that.
Okay.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
Okay, and yeah, that is the last slide of the presentation. So, the COG definitely respects, respects the ultimate decision of the city council. So, we understand that this plan is not for everybody and, but we do hope that cities will participate in a regional effort. If the city does not have the, if the city has limited resources and time and cannot dedicate enough resources to run their own coyote management, public safety program.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any additional questions? No? Okay, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just, just one, just one. I believe this was modeled after a certain city's coyote management plan.
It was modeled off of the city of Arcadia's coyote management plan.
How effective was it? I mean, at least was there in any kind empirical data supporting if this is even effective?
Yeah, so, um, Arcadia did receive a decrease in the number of coyote reports and coyote attacks on pets over time, as well as the number of reported coyote incidents.
How much?
Um, so overall report, quarter one started with two hundred and eleven reports. Quarter four ended with fifty-seven.
What, what period of time is that?
Uh, twenty-eighth, so, okay, so there is, um, I believe there is a seasonal factor that is included in this 'cause quarter one is January to March, quarter four is September to December. But overall, even when the summer season came, it started from two hundred and eleven in quarter one to a hundred and seventeen in quarter two, to seventy-nine in quarter three, to fifty-seven in quarter four.
Could it be just people are not interested in reporting?
Uh, excuse me, sorry.
Could it be just people just got tired of reporting?
It could be that too.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and, no more, no more questions, correct? I'm gonna go ahead and open public comments, if we have any public comments on this issue. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments and gonna go ahead and start with council comments. Did you wanna start?
Sure, I'll start. First of all, I wanna thank you for coming and you shed a lot of good light on this subject and, you know, last time it was before is we didn't have a lot of the information and.
Thank you.
And I think it was very helpful, certainly for me, to hear all of this. What stood out in my mind and, and I think the benefit of this program is the, is the training workshops, the mailers, the getting the word out, the educational component. Because at the end of the day, current law really only, will provide only for that. You can only edu, we can only educate the public on what not to do or what to do. And, and to me, the success of this program or the success of what we're doing here really is gonna depend on, on the residents themselves. As we do with our neighborhood watch, I kind of look at it that way. We keep telling our residents, don't leave stuff on your seats of your car, don't do this, don't leave your doors unlocked, don't leave your windows unlocked. But you know what happens? People still do it. And in fact, in our last report, there were four, I think, four vert, vehicle burglaries because people left their purses on their, on their front, uh, front seat. So, um, you know, to me, I mean, i- it's a good way of gathering information, a good way of spreading the word. It's my understanding in talking with our city manager that we don't have the staff or the, you know, resources to do anything close to this, as far as educating the public. You know, like any of, any, any education program, you have to start somewhere and hope that people will take these things to heart and, and we will see a decrease in, in incidences. I mean, I don't know that we have a coyote problem in the city, depends on who you talk to, I guess. If you look at Ring, it appears that we do. But if you look, you know, I for one, live right near Wash and I haven't seen a coyote in six months. And so, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, at the end of the day, I guess, you know, and I, I was one of the, I was one of the skeptics at first about this whole program. Are we getting what we need for, for our buck? And, you know, based on, on your, on what you've said tonight, I, I think I can go ahead and support this program for a couple of years. It's, it's, you know, significant, not a significant amount of money, although, you know, ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars. But if we can get, if we can get those workshops and we get that, that information out and, and hopefully by using that data, we can see that there is some kind of increased, you know, and again, if after two years we see it's not working, then obviously there's no further obligation and, and we do something else, so that's my feeling on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Yes, thank you. And, and also I wanna thank Alexander for the presentation, very informative and I, I learned a lot that we didn't really, that I didn't really understand from our last meeting. I think for what we're getting, a- as Mayor Protem has mentioned, we as a small city are unable to provide this type of resources at this level to our residents. So, I, I think the education component of it, if it's done in a consistent and robust manner, such as if we're able to combine it with some of our other, like say, neighborhood watch meetings or other things like that to maximize the effect of our outreach or, you know, if we have these presentations that are ninety minutes long, can we, are we allowed to record them and post them so that other folks who can't attend those meetings can watch those videos?
I'm sure Jerry will be there.
So, I, I kinda wanna see what's the maximum output we can, we can get with, with, you know, two, two meetings doesn't seem like a lot on the outset, especially considering, you know, can people actually make those dates? Can people stay for an hour and a half? Uh, I want us to be able to kind of get the most out of that. I think ultimately, though, this, this issue that I guess frustrates a lot of us at the local level is really fundamentally where our hands are tied because of the existing laws at the state level. At least that's my understanding, that, that don't allow local jurisdictions to react in ways that maybe our residents would like us to. And so, that's the fundamental conundrum is, is, is that. And also, there's also the ongoing debate as to whether, from a principle standpoint, or do we choose to coexist and find ways to coexist or do we choose to fight and exterminate, to use more crude terms? And I think a lot of residents maybe take a more reactive approach. It's, it's a very personal thing when your pet gets attacked or killed or you, you feel like you're being invaded even though others would make the case that we're the ones invading the coyote's natural habitat, so. But I guess from my perspective, I tend to side with the safety of our residents being paramount to the safety of coyotes. Like, I'll just, I'll just be blunt about it. So, that's why I kind of asked the policy, policy question ultimately is, does the COG have a unified voice in terms of what they wanna achieve from a longer term? Beyond simply collecting data and informing and educating residents? 'Cause when I hear a coyote management plan that centers around education, to me, that implies that fundamentally you're not, we're not considering the entrapment, capture or the, what I would call the more proactive, well, it depends on how you look at it. I, I consider that more of a proactive approach to what our, our residents would consider an adequate response. So, ultimately, I, I would like to ask maybe further down the line as we get more and more data is where the COG stands as, as this program develops. I'm, I'm supportive of, of the program now, 'cause I, I think it'll be, it'll be good for our residents, it'll be good for us to get a different perspective on it. And hopefully we, we learn more and hopefully we can come back a year later and report the same numbers that Alexander just reported for the four quarters in Arcadia. And maybe we could kinda look at that as a, maybe a rough barometer of how well that, that plan is, is working. We could keep track of those numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, just one real quick, like ten seconds. The, the ti, the training workshops that you mentioned, I'm assuming that you'll work, you don't need to answer this, but I'm assuming that you'll be working with the cities and arranging those things. The thought that came to my mind, just based on what Councilmember Mann brought up, I, I still think if we can figure out a way to, to match those up with our neighborhood watch, maybe a shorter version, like a fifteen, twenty-minute version of that ninety-minute, I think that would really, really be a good thing to add. We're always looking to things to add to our neighborhood watch and this, and remember, neighborhood watch is not only crime prevention, but safety issues as well, and this certainly is a safety issue. So, I, I would, I would like to see us at least work to that end with, with the COG on that.
And I think a condensed version of that can be something that even our volunteers or our neighborhood watch folks that work on it would be able to take on and present themselves if it's condensed.
Based on the information that's provided to us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we have those ten meetings a year, so it's a lot of opportunities.
Yeah.
Councilmember, you?
I'm highly skeptical of this program as some of the question that I have raised. I have a lot of issue with just managing people and not actually kinda like some of the argument I put forth that's really attacking the source of the issue. Trapping and killing actually is like the, Alexander said, actually are le, is legal in California. I think what Arcadia ran into before was that people were opposed to the euthanizing of the, of the coyotes. It's, I mean, while people have issue with their pets being killed, they also have issue with the coyotes being killed. So, um, they were trying to relocate them and that just simply wouldn't work. I mean, trapping and relocation just simply would not work. So, but, uh, I'll be more supportive of this program had actually the COG had put forward a larger vision that, okay, we'll collect these data, we're gonna be, if it's certain, past certain tipping point, we're gonna actively lobby to, and then maybe have some, um, try, try to come with some real e, some real solution to this. I'm not sure how effective this is, I'm really highly skeptical. However, having said that, we actually don't have such a program in place like the mayor Protem pointed out very, very early. We actually don't have such a program here. I'm willing to give it a try. It's a fairly, I mean, the cost is, while we wanna be careful with public money, the cost is not so high that we should not give it a try. I would encourage the COG would consider being, having a fairly large minority. population within San Gabriel Valley, that we partner with our, um, perhaps some of the minority media as well, to make sure everybody's getting the same message, so that, you know, it, that's, that, that's no good if I stop putting out water and, and food, but my neighbor not getting the, not reading it, the, the right, uh, language, is feeding or leaving out pet food for, for, for the, for the cats, but in, in turn, the coyotes come and eat them. So, I would be supportive to give it a try, and we'll see, you know, like, some of the suggestions here. We'll see how well it works out in a year, and hopefully, uh, my skepticism is wrong, and hopefully, this is highly successful. And, um, so I'll be willing to give it a try.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, sure. You know, it, it, it's hard to sit up here and not think that your colleagues possibly think you're a little biased, because you might be president of, um, the Council of Government, but, um, in everything I do
I'd say the same thing, and when we have an insurance issue, though.
That's true. But I mean, a- a- and, you know, whether it's transportation or what have you, I mean, I can't say that I'm not closely in tune with it, because I hear it frequently, obviously. But, um, you know, I, I, I have a little bit of a different viewpoint than, um, Councilmember Mann. I, I don't even know if I know how individually each of us feels regarding trapping or euthanizing coyotes. And, I mean, unless we, as a council, took a vote a- and then said, "Okay, well, this is the direction of policy we're going towards, either in euthanizing or trapping." But we don't even know that, because I don't know how the rest of you feel about that. So, to say that, you know, in a year or two, that the vision might be to get to that point, I don't even know if that's the place where this council wants to be, because we haven't had that discussion. That's a separate discussion. But I do think that we spend, I don't know what the cost is for our neighborhood watch, um, program, but I see this in that same category, as public safety. And first and foremost, I think one of the things that I want to live in is a safe city. And I want to be safe when I walk the streets. I want to be safe if it's either from, like, a coyote, or from someone who's on my street that shouldn't be there, that's looking to do harm, or to do harm, or, you know, take something from somebody's property. So I think if we look at it from a public safety standpoint, it's not a lot of money to spend to add an extra layer of safety to our city. When, when we look at the neighborhood watch program, you know, most of that is education. We're educating the, the residents, keep your doors locked, get the Ring program. These are things that you can do. Our neighborhood watch programs are predominantly educational, and they have been extremely successful in this city. So I just see this as another layer of public safety. So from that standpoint, I think, like Councilmember you said, we should try it and see if there is a reduction in the amount of, you know, calls that we get where people feel that they were threatened, or that their pets were, um, you know, harmed or killed. So from that public safety perspective, I think it's well worth the $10,000.
Thank you.
Madam, may I just say one other thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I actually have seen, uh, for whatever reason, I do run the coyotes a lot. I run into them all the time, every other month or so, or sometimes several times a month, and the worst was I see three running in front of my house, and, and they are totally blamed. But I thought that besides educating our resident, and perhaps this, we can urge the state to study more coyote behavior, because actually, I've never could believe, and I said, I, I told some of you before, I've seen coyote coming in and out of catch bases. And I believe maybe a more systematic way of installing some fencing or some screen might be more helpful, because that's like a coyote highway.
Yes, yes, it is.
I mean, even though maybe not be, I, I don't live right next to a wash as much as, uh, Mayor Protem, but fairly close. But, uh, I've seen them coming in from, they came out from one side of the catch basin, walk across the street, go back down into the other side of the catch basin. I couldn't believe until I saw it. I mean, the gap, the, the, it was only like four, five inches that, that, but the full-size coyote getting out, I couldn't believe it until I actually saw it, so. But maybe there were things that the, this, the COG and would be able to study, maybe something that we can do would help the allevi- other than just educating our people, not put out pet, cat food, don't feed the coyotes, so.
You know, I'm just curious, but does our sheriff department get frequent calls for coyotes? I think this, yeah, and I think this is one way to educate people to, to alleviate them calling the sheriff's department for something that they can call, you know, the Coyote Management Hotline.
Call Alex.
Or Alex.
Can we have your number before you leave tonight? You know, the funniest story I ever, I don't know if I told you this story, it's a coyote story, this is about two years ago, and there were a couple of coyotes coming out of the wash.
Yeah.
Sheriff car happened to be driving by, and the sheriff deputy, wasn't Deputy Lamb or any, I don't even know who it was, but chased the coyotes in his car.
I believe it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know what, to what end that was gonna happen, but they just simply went back down into the wash, but
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of chased them for a block or two.
Thank you.
Interesting.
One of the problems with going last is everyone has usually said everything, but I'll just kind of wrap it up here. I live about two blocks from a wash. I have seen three coyotes in at least the last six months, two in my front yard, one across the street. Uh, they are not sick, they are healthy adult, um, coyotes, and they are just hanging out.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's scary. I get up in the morning, I usually do my gardening, and I have opened my front door, and they were right there. Now, now, I can say that two to three years ago, I got a lot more complaints, but I think residents have come to the conclusion, "Why complain? We can't do anything about it." Now, with that being said, um, I do think that we have to partner with at least the neighborhood watch, um, program, because if we start having these community meetings, I'm not sure anybody will come, because they've already been told there's nothing we can do. So why would we waste our time going to a meeting for 90 minutes? And what are you gonna tell us? You're gonna tell us not to leave our, not to leave our food out, you know, bring our pets in at night. It's kind of the same old thing. I think it, it would be much, much more, um, what is the word I'm looking for?
Beneficial.
Beneficial, thank you, if we already had an audience, and if it's, it was a public safety audience, like neighborhood watch. So please, when we talk about, you know, when we decide, and again, I would, again, rather have a con- con- condensed version and have an audience, than have a 90-minute presentation and have five people there. Because that is just not gonna, that, that, what is the point? Okay? I do think when you start out your presentation, you should probably start out with the fact that, you know, maybe in the future, you're looking into looking at legislation. I can tell you that when people call me, I always tell them, "Unfortunately, they're protected animals, and at a local level, we cannot do anything about it. The sheriff's department cannot do anything about it." They don't like to hear that. And, you know, especially if they are getting their animals, I mean, for a lot of our residents, their animals, they're, they're part of their family. And they will, you know, they will call and they will be very upset, and there's nothing we can tell them. There's nothing we can do. So, um, again, I would just suggest that you do that, because I do think if this program is successful, you could go to the legislature. I know Cynthia and I have been very involved in the legislature, and let me tell you, there's a lot of things that are not, not as pertinent as this, that go through all the time. So, you know, I, I'm actually happy that you're going to be keeping track of this. I would encourage, though, again, our residents to report it, because again, I feel like they have just kind of given up, and it's like, "Oh, well," you know? So this at least gives them a voice to say, "Hey, we're trying something. We're gonna try it. We're gonna try it for two years, we're gonna see what happens, we're gonna see if we can poss- possibly get legislation changed." And it does give our residents a sense of that we, we are listening to them. We're listening to them, that they, they don't feel safe. Like I said, when I open, when I walk in my front door, out my front door at six in the morning, I'm kind of looking for coyotes. I hate to say it, but you know what? I, I live on a pretty busy street, on a corner, and they just cut right through my yard, and, uh, it's a little bit terrifying. As far as the $10,000 a year, I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it to at least try this program, see if it, if, if it can result in, you know, education, we know. And we are always better off, the more education you have, the more that you know how to react to these situations. Okay? And then, of course, but I do, please understand that I do believe that if you have these as just regular meetings, not being attached to something else, I don't really think people are gonna come. That's just my, my opinion, I don't know if anybody else thinks that way, but our residents have heard for so long that there's nothing we can do, and then they're gonna go to a meeting, and what are we gonna tell them? Well, here's all this information, but there's still nothing we can do. So, um, but I would, I would support this. Again, I'd like to at least try it for two years, and maybe, again, revisit it in two years and see what happens. And the other thing I'd like to know is, do you plan on giving us, like, a yearly report, a quarterly report, a monthly report, something? I, I don't know if, that was never mentioned?
Alexander?
I'm sorry, you have to come up here. I just, actually, I just thought of that, so I would have a- asked you earlier.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we could do an annual report at the city council. Um, we've, we have
Okay.
the city of San Gabriel put that part, as part of MOA, um, for staff to come in and do an annual report.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be possible.
I would, I would really think that we would appreciate that. I'd like to see what's going on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Fish, based on the comments given by the council, the motion, while to receive a motion that the council could consider would be to bring back the MOU at the next meeting?
Oh, okay.
Based on the
That's the motion.
Based on the, based on the input I just heard from the council.
Okay. Now, in that motion, do we have to include a yearly?
You could put it in.
If that, if that, if that's something that you would like to include as the direction to me to bring back at the next meeting, that's, we will do that. And I will work with Mr. Fung and the COG staff to include that in there.
Okay.
Aren't we gonna be a little shorthanded next meeting?
We'll, we'll be a little shorthanded, but considering the timeframe that the COG has, um, that's why we will bring it back the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, can I get a motion? Right, I need a motion, right?
So move.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, Nun, update from city manager.
A couple updates. Mayor Fish, um, busy, uh, month of, uh, October, um, as Sydney, as Cindy said, uh, earlier today, um, San Gabriel Valley Humane Society will be having their, um, event on October 5th from 10 to 4. Their big 95th Gala Relay for Life is October 12th, here at Temple City Park. October 19th, we will have a council meeting be- be- between that time, but we'll have a car show, the Fall Festival, and a bike safety fair, all in Temple City Park that day. Staggered times throughout the day, but approximately about, from about 10 till 6 that day, Temple City Park will be really busy.
And a bike ride.
And a bike ride going up and down.
So please bring your bike.
Bring, yeah, well, we'll get a little more information about that, but the bike safety that is being sponsored and paid for, thanks to the East Side Bike Riders Association, who is, uh, volunteering their time and resources for that event.
Who are they?
They are a, um, they are a bike, they are, they are a bike coalition, um, that is a non-profit
Sounds like a gang.
It does. It is, it is.
They're a great, great organization that, um, one of my staff members has worked with before, Ms. Flores, um, in the city of LA, to teach young men and women, uh, and children bike safety plans. So they'll, you'll see the orange cones out on, on Golden West, and they, they volunteer their time to assist them on how to do proper bike riding and those kind of things as well. There may be a few giveaways as well that day.
Correct, and a community bike ride, so again
Yeah, up and down.
When does that bike ride start?
We're, we'll nail, we're gonna nail the time of that, it's probably gonna be about 1 o'clock, but we'll
Okay, good.
we'll nail that down. It's, we're coordinating three events at once that day. It's gonna be a busy day. Lastly, um, we are converting to the cloud, we are getting up to the 21st century, so, for those who, for the members of the public who emailed us over the weekend, uh, you may get a delayed response from us, hopefully, the conversion goes very smoothly, but, um, we're converting over the weekend, uh, to have the least amount of disruption during business hours, uh, so hopefully, it'll go well. But if you do get a delay in response, it's not that we're not responding to you, we're just, we're converting, hopefully, it goes smoothly.
Do we need update, uh, to Outlook?
You, you'll, you'll need, we will be emailing you some instructions on your iPads as well. So you'll, you'll, you should have that from Ms. Flores shortly.
She sent it to us earlier.
She sent it, yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Didn't mention iPads, so, but, okay. Anything else?
Anything else, Mayor Fish?
Thank you. Update from city attorney.
Hey, thank you. The first item is actually one that came up tonight, and I just wanted to make, make a little clarifying statement. The Political Reform Act in dealing with conflicts of interest has an express carve-out for any position that you hold by virtue of being appointed by this city council to that other position. So for example, Councilmember Sternquist, being appointed by you as a council to sit on the COG, has no conflict of interest when you, as a council, are voting on COG matters. That was pretty clear, uh, she knew that tonight, but I did want to make that clear for the public watching, that, that is an express carve-out in the statute to account for situations just like this. Uh, second, and it was mentioned earlier, but I wanted to bring to your attention, the city of Duarte and city of Gardena cases against the California, or the state reg- the state Water Board and the, um, uh, Regional Water Board actually resulted in the judge striking from the MS4 permit all numeric effluent limits that apply to, uh, cities and other public agencies. The state is appealing and will file a writ to try and keep those in place during the pendency of their appeal, but as of right now, the court has said that if you put in numeric limits without taking into account the ability, um, of the local public agencies to pay for, uh, the technology to reach those numeric effluent limits, uh, that, that, that you violated the Clean Water Act. Third, Assembly Bill 5, which I touched on last time, uh, we've said the focus is Uber and Lyft, and calling their drivers employees. Uh, we're still reviewing all the impacts on public agencies, but as of today, we believe that we will not see significant disruption in services by public agencies based on AB5. And finally, and this was something that came up today, just a little bit of knowledge, California Fish and Wildlife oversees coyotes and also oversees bears. It's interesting to note that San Diego, Orange, Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties are all served out of, uh, one small office in San Diego County. So if you have a coyote issue that requires fish and wildlife to come out, and their person on call, um, cannot get to you quickly, they're gonna be sending, uh, follow-up people from San Diego up to Temple City to deal with your coyote or your bear, or whatever it might be. Not the most efficient, but that's the way it goes. That's my report for tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings?
No meetings.
Okay. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilman, you?
Uh, nothing to add. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Mann?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
A couple of things, um, tomorrow I'll be meeting with, um, COG members, leadership, and San Bernardino, um, County Transit Authority. And the reason of the, for the meeting is, um, to extend the Gold Line to, from Pomona to Claremont is going to cost, I believe, an additional about $500,000.
No, wait.
I mean, five I mean, five mil, $500 million. So, San Bernardino County has about $95,000 or $80,000 that they hold right now in transit dollars that they could put towards that extension.
Wait. Eighty million?
Eighty million dollars. I'm sorry, eighty million dollars. So basically, the gap is 15 million dollars that they would need to fully fund their portion with their tax dollars to continue the Gold Line from Pomona to Claremont. So the other, say, 415 million dollars or 410 million dollars, whatever that would come, would be up to the San Gabriel Valley to secure for the Gold Line. But with the almost 100 million dollars from San Bernardino County, they would, instead of needing 500 million dollars, they would need 400 million dollars to continue that extension. Where is that money gonna come from? I don't know, but there's two years for the Gold Line to, to secure those funding. Well, San Bernardino County Transit Authority says, is saying right now that they don't wanna spend their 85 million dollars on that extension. They would rather put it into San Bernardino County proper. So I guess the San Bernardino County line starts where at? Greg?
Montclair.
Montclair, right? So, anyway, the meeting tomorrow is to help convince the San Bernardino County how important it is regionally to get that Gold Line to go to, from Pomona to Montclair. So that's what the meeting is about tomorrow. I don't, how successful that will be, I don't know. They're just as protective of their monies in their region as we are.
Have you been to San Bernardino lately?
I have not.
I've been out there a few times, and I figured they could use that money for other things than the Gold Line.
Well, I think that's what their, their thoughts are, too.
It's, it's in tough shape.
So...
But you're saying that even if they were willing to put in their 90 million, we still, we as the region, we still need to come another 410?
410.
Well, that's probably behind their thinking. They're saying, why should we put up 85 if you can't come up with the other?
Right.
400 million, why bother? That's what I'd be saying.
So it'll be interesting to hear that conversation.
This is a check. So, this is a check that was presented from Susan Rubio to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments for $5,625,000. And this money is to support the homeless plans that are already in existence and then to help other cities formulate their homeless plans if they haven't done so. And this is also to give 100, let's see, to give 1 million dollars to the housing trust fund. So there's a new JPA that's being set up by Susan Rubio with state funding to help homelessness in the San Gabriel Valley region. So it seems like a lot of money, but we all know, this is not a lot of money to go, that will go far for 30 cities to help at least manage homelessness in the region. But it's a start. So I just wanted to show you that the COG is working hard on all the city's behalf to secure funds for homeless plans also.
One last thing, at the last meeting, I mentioned that there would be the possibility of an extension of the library into the landscape section. And staff will be working with the county on developing what that landscaping will look like. We do know that it'll be somewhat of an extension, like a secret garden, if you will, where kids can go out and read, or families. And both the Women's Club and Kiwanis have both agreed to give 500 dollars to purchase one of possibly four benches. I don't think there will be enough space for more than that. And Charles Trevino has reached out to me today, and we are gonna meet next week with the possibility of the upper district devoting 5,000 to 10,000 dollars to partner with the city to do somewhat of the, a drought tolerant landscaping around that section. So some positive things happening and extending our library.
So is the idea of be able to go from a library out to the outside?
Yes.
And while still carrying a library book and reading? That's interesting, 'cause I was involved in a lot of library designs in my other career. Typically, that would involve some kind of security fencing?
Well, most of them are done by, by fencing that we saw, which is, and you were with us when we saw.
Maybe they can put those rolls up.
They're usually enclosed.
It's like enclosure. It's not open to the public.
Yeah, you can only go into it through the library.
I understand that, but invariably, they would end up putting a cover on top because people throw books over and...
No, they wouldn't do that in Temple City, would they?
Of course, not in our city.
Um, you know, it, around the perimeter of the fencing were pretty tall trees. Whether they were olive trees or what have you, but...
Where there's a will, there's a way.
And I've seen many, a lot of times, we build those and people don't use them because of the, they have security issue. So I, I just would suggest if you work with the county library, just ask that question, how are they gonna secure that? Because making that in a cage, I'm not sure is what we want.
Well, we actually were able to see it at three different libraries by the same architect that's designing our library, and it's absolutely beautiful.
Wonderful.
So it was, it was, it's a concept that has already, is in place with the same architect and has been working really well, so.
Okay, good.
Anyway.
I have a quick question. Is Temple City gonna benefit from any of this money?
If we decide to do a homeless plan, there will be a pocket of money here for us to do so.
Okay, so how do we do a homeless plan? Is that, is that even on the, is that even on the table? I never even heard of that.
We didn't do it at the last, the last time it was offered.
It has to be offered.
It has to be offered by who?
No, it was offered. We just didn't do it and, we just didn't do it. It was an oversight, correct?
We did not do a homeless plan when the county provided additional funding.
Can we still do a homeless plan?
You can, we can, absolutely, if the council directs a future meeting for us to look at what a homeless plan could look like. I'd like, if that's the direction of the council without violating the Brown Act here. I would wanna, I would wanna create some guidelines to discuss what that would potentially look like and how we could replicate what fits our community here as well.
You know, the problem I see, a little off thing, but just, well, just real quick. You know, you got Senator Rubio donating money. You've got the county with their homeless plan. It seems to me that if all these entities would get together and just talk it over together and come up with one plan that could work in different areas, it's not that hard to do. But you've got this entity doing this plan, this entity doing that plan, and I don't know, it just, doesn't seem like anybody wants to work together on this thing.
We know. Did you have anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just a few things.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, you go. You can, go ahead. I wouldn't like to, sorry.
You don't wanna go, you don't go left.
I wanna go home. Oh, that's right. Okay, I'll go next.
Go ahead.
Reminder, Relay for Life is Saturday, October 12th here at Temple City Park. Starts at 9:00 AM. It will go until 9:00 PM. You do not need to actually participate in the walk. To just come and visit, see what we're doing. We'll have lots of information about cancer screening. We'll also have entertainment and food the entire day. So please come and join us. The second thing is, I did attend the conveying of LA County Mayors, which is hosted by Eric Carsetti. And this particular time, it was also hosted by the city of South Pasadena. It's a great opportunity for all of our local mayors to get together, to share ideas, to share things that have worked and things that have not worked. Eric Carsetti is very gracious in organizing that. I believe it's quarterly now. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that I do intend on going to as many of those as I can. Also today, Kiwanis hosted a wonderful ice cream social at the school district. And it was a great opportunity for myself especially to meet a lot of the new employees for the school district and the new principals. I do not have any children in Temple City Unified Schools anymore. And you hear all these names and you see all these faces and a lot of different things, and we don't know who they are. So thank, thank you, Kiwanis. I thought it was really nice. You know, a lot of the people that were, are now principals were promoted, which was nice because I knew them back when they were teachers and different things when my kids were in, were in school, so.
That's nice.
Yeah, it was. It was very nice. So thank you. That's all I have.
Seems like there were a lot of new principals.
There is. There's like four, I think. Yeah.
Good group.
And assistant principals, lots of different things.
Shout out to Jerry, acted as the emcee.
Well, yeah, he did the, he did the...
Had the comedy act going on there. Although, if I was a student, I don't know that I wanna be up there grilled by you, though. Give him a tough time, huh? Did a good job. Did a good job. All right, I just have one thing, and I, I'm just throwing this out there, not for any decisions tonight or, or just to kind of, because it, it, it kind of, I wouldn't say bothered me, but I think we're all aware that a couple of weeks ago, there was a major site plan review for the construction of a four-story building, a mixed-use project on Rosemead Boulevard. And, you know, I, I really didn't have that much information on it. In fact, I walked in on the meeting and they were having a planning director's meeting for that, and I was wondering, well, what is that? I, I didn't even know that they were having such a meeting. But it, it, so I brought it up with Brian, and he reminded me that when we, when we, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we approved of the specific plan, part of that approval of that specific plan was to allow projects such as the, as this one, to basically be approved without having to go through planning or the city council, but merely having a director's hearing. And Brian, again, stop me if I'm misstating it, but that was my understanding.
Right, and I'll let Mr. Murphy just give, without, again, without going into any discussion tonight on it or anything else, just give a very brief overview.
So Brian and I have talked about this, and just having come up through serving planning commissions, I thought maybe I could summarize it better. What the specific plan did was it took certain types of projects that would normally require a conditional use permit and got rid of that requirement. Under the zoning code as it currently stands today, that is, before we do any updates, if a site plan review is the only approval required, then that site plan review can be done by the director. If the site plan review is coupled with any other permit, a conditional use permit, a variance, a subdivision map, you name it, then it moves up and is done by the planning commission or potentially even by you as the city council. So what happened in this particular circumstance is a project, a mixed-use project of some size that would...
Well, again, I don't think you're being fair, and I don't mean to correct you, but of some size, this is probably one of the largest projects in recent years in Temple City.
A project that could be considered one of the largest in recent years was called out in the specific plan as something that was wanted for this area. And the purpose of a specific plan is to streamline approvals so that developers will be attracted to bring into the specific plan area the types of projects that the council in approving the specific plan has said, this is what we wanna see here. There are times, and your specific plan doesn't do this, but there are times where if a project meets what the plan calls for, then there would never be any kind of discretionary approval. There wouldn't even be the site plan review. It would be, you meet what we, you meet what we ask for, you come straight in. And it's a, it's an economic development incentive by saying, you meet what we ask for, we're gonna make it very easy for this project to be approved.
But that, but then that, that doesn't change until we change the specific plan?
So, one change that is coming with the zoning code update. The site plan review process is being divided into minor site plan reviews and major. And it's divided at seven housing units and 10,000 square feet of commercial. If a project has either one of those two, either 7,000, I'm sorry, either seven units or 10,000 square feet of commercial, then the site plan review will go to planning commission. Whether or not there are any other permits being sought...
But that doesn't apply to this one?
This one is, has been processed already under the existing code.
All right. So however, if this one were to come up in the future, then if, according to this zoning change, it would have to at least go through planning?
It would go to the planning commission. Now, again, talking about the purpose of a specific plan and the economic development incentives, they would not be seeking a conditional use permit. So the, what the planning commission would be reviewing is the site plan, the design. Does this look like it fits into the specific plan area and into the city as a whole? Not, do we think mixed use is appropriate for this site? Because the specific plan has already said, yes, we think it is. But it will be publicly reviewed by the commission in a way that the project that you speak of was not.
Yeah, and the reason I bring up, I just, and that makes me feel better. I have a more of a comfort level with that type of procedure than what this thing went, 'cause, you know, this is a, and even in the, even in the minutes, it refers to as a major site plan review. We're talking about a, a project that's, you know, 73 residential units, you know, 83,000 square feet. I can't recall a project that big in our city in a long, long time. And to, I don't know, I, I just feel that, you know, kind of, I guess, for want of a better term, helpless in the fact that, you know, when a resident comes to me and says, hey, what, what is this, you know? And, well, you know, we didn't approve it. You know, since we did, because we already approved the specific plan and said, yeah, we want these type of businesses to come in. And so I understand all of that. I, I just feel that for these type of projects, for this one individually, and I'm not, I'm not saying in any way that this project was not handled correctly. It was entirely handled correctly, and I think staff did a great job on it. And I don't have an objection to the, to this particular project. But I think in moving forward, I would feel a little bit more of a comfort level in knowing that this size of a plan at least had some type of review other than just by the director or somebody, our staff member. Not that they don't know what they're doing, but after all, I mean, we're elected officials and as elected officials, you know, people are gonna look to us for, for what they perceive as a policy decision to put this project in this particular place, so.
Understood.
So I, I just wanted to bring that up, and I, I'm glad I, I did not hear this before. I don't know, Brian, I know we discussed it, and I think you had mentioned it before, but I'm glad you brought that up to kind of clear that up so that moving forward, at least, something like this won't, won't probably occur.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and recess to the successor agency. I'd like to call the meeting to order of October 1st, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember man?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember you?
Here.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. Consent calendar? All consent calendar items meeting?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Communications, none. Public comments? Closing public comments, none. Update from executive director and agency council, none. Matters from agency members, none. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the successor agency and go back to our regular meeting. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the successor agency and go back to our regular meeting. Additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Anyone? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.